Council's scrutiny committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section 43 of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the meeting chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the Committee Services Officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the meeting chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will ask for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat. Otherwise, the item will be agreed. Plead would members not use the meeting chat for any other purposes as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I will now ask the Committee Services Officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you. Bailey Keenan.
Here.
Present. Councillor McCready.
I'm here.
I have apologies from Bailey Scott. Bailey McPherson.
Good afternoon, present.
Councillor Lynn.
Present.
Councillor Short.
I'm here.
I have apologies from councillor Ross. Councillor Cadell.
Present.
Councillor Cadell is substituting for Bailey Sawyers. That takes us on to the first item on the agenda, declarations of interest. Does any member have a declaration?
Appears not.
Okay, that takes us on to item two on the agenda, which is the internal audit reports.
You going to talk me through some of these, Pamela? And then we'll take questions as we go.
Yes, please. Thank you. So I have four internal audit reports this time around that have been finalised since the last scrutiny committee. I'll just go through each one in turn. So the first report is on materials purchasing within construction services in the organisation, where we carried out an end-to-end review of the materials purchasing process from requisition through to payment. From the work that we carried out, we have concluded that there were certainly at the time of the audit, significant weaknesses in the system that required to be addressed. The main areas of concern that you'll see from the report are around the procurement procedures operating in construction services for materials used in both jobs and materials required for store. The process for requisitioning, ordering and receipt of materials, including weaknesses around authorisation and segregation of duties. And the use of the materials pickup process in situations that were not classed as emergency, which is why the process was designed in the first place. So the report has been discussed at length with management and I know that some work has already commenced to address the areas requiring improvement, including the appointment of a new procurement category officer, who will be working specifically with construction services on their procurement. And a reduction in the number of people who are able to raise a requisition and order. Management has advised me that all of the areas requiring improvement will be addressed by the 30th of September this year. Thank you.
Do you see any questions in the chat on this one? So questions from councillor McCready?
Yes, thanks very much, convener. I mean, thanks for the report. Suppose what I'm looking for is just some reassurance that practical steps are being made, are being taken and what those, some of those practical steps might be because I think the report is slightly concerning or more than slightly concerning. And I think also, you know, we're aware that, you know, certainly if you've read the newspapers recently, you know, you're aware that there are some issues around some of this stuff. So, I mean, so I think you said by the end of September, that the conclusions, that the actions will be in place. I mean, I don't know if it's particularly, I think, not sure we want all the detail today, but I think it might be helpful to have a little bit more detail on, from, from the officers involved about, about how this is, how this is going to work and how we're, and how confident we are that we can make sure that we're getting value for money, for the money that's been spent and that there's, there won't be any ongoing misappropriation of materials and, and that are being, that are meant to be used by the council.
So, Officer, will you get to respond to that at the moment or? Think you come back at some time once this new person's in post and can make a reasonable comment?
Convener, if I can say a few words, just in terms of the procurement category officer, that post has now been filled and we're expecting that officer to start early in the next month. And that will go a long way to hopefully reassuring scrutiny committee that we have the appropriate segregation in place and also that the appropriate knowledge and experience in relation to procurement will be operating within construction services. We also have established our construction services governance board and that board will ensure that all the recommendations are addressed timiously and will be monitoring the progress of the action plan. So hopefully that gives a reassurance to councillor McCready that all of that, the actions that are required are in hand to be delivered in the timescale outlined.
So helpful councillor McCready?
Yeah, I think that's helpful. Let me follow up offline, but yeah, happy with that.
And I would probably like to hear a bit more about it as well because I wouldn't like to hope, I wouldn't like to think that we got overly cumbersome in bureaucracy while we introduced something with control materials, you know, and, you know, increasing the workforce in any great amount. You know, I think we should be trying to manage it slightly differently. Okay. Councillor Cadell, you looking to come in?
Thank, thank you Chair. This, this might be a difficult question to answer, but obviously devolving responsibility to employees is a good thing. You don't want to be micromanaging everyone. So I wonder, is it possible to maybe touch on how we hope to strike the right balance?
Right, I'll, I'll come into that if that's okay. With the new category officer that's coming on board, the previous post holder was purely dedicated to a purchase officer role. And the new officer coming in will also deal with compliance and auditing. So we will have a series of checks in place to ensure that when orders are raised or requisitioned or goods received, that there is a checking process in place. We're also looking at increasing the levels of authorisation. So, and some of the points that Pamela made out about the number of people who have authority at the moment, that's been significantly reduced. We reduce, we would look to reduce that further, but also under just a further layer of authorisation so that senior managers either on the contract or senior managers within the section have proper sight and can give that necessary authorisation so that moving forward, there is a much greater level of scrutiny at that point of order. And therefore that can then be replicated at the point of receipt as well. That is the intent. And the category officer, because she will be located within the corporate property team, gives her that element of independence that she can have and much more. She can drill down more into the detail with the level of independence and she can revert to the corporate property team as and when we need further advice or training or, or assistance. So hopefully that will go some way to taking out a lot of the uncertainty around the number of people who currently have that authority vested within them.
Hopefully that answers your question councillor Cadell.
Yeah, thank you.
Convener, Mr Colgan also wishes to speak.
Okay, thanks Greg.
Thanks convener. It was just to emphasise what Rob has said there, that the post holder will report through the corporate procurement team, not the property team. So there will be a link into the central team. And just to pick up, convener, on your point, we will ensure that adequate controls are in place to give officers and members sufficient assurance that there are necessary controls in place, such as segregation of duties, but they will not mean that there will be an administrative burden placed on staff. We will ensure that we strike that balance and adequate controls and making sure that if we are designing new systems, that they engage with the staff who will be delivering those, which is custom and practice to what we've done before.
Okay, hopefully that reassures people. Thank you for that. Okay, Pamela, we'll move, take it, that item's agreed. Okay, we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you. So the second report is on Alphatec, where we carried out a review to assess the operational effectiveness and logical security control. So that's password control and access rights, et cetera, of the new Alphatec insurance management system. So this is a positive report and we have concluded that there is a sound system of control in place. There's a couple of areas you'll see there for improvement that have been noted around utilisation of the reporting functionality within the system and a reconciliation at year end, which I believe was planned in any case. As I said, that's a positive report.
Is there any questions on this report? Is that report agreed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The third report then. The third report is on homelessness. So we carried out a review of the adequacy of the systems in place within neighbourhood services to ensure it meets statutory obligations in respect of homelessness and recording of associated outcomes. The scope of the audit concentrated though on the assessment phase of homelessness. As you'll all be aware, the percentage of applications assessed within 28 days is lower in Dundee than nationally and management was really keen to understand if there was a specific reason for this. And so the review was originally included in the 2021 internal audit plan for that reason. Again, though, this is a positive report and we have concluded that there is a sound system of control in place. And I can say that from the work that we carried out, we're confident that the below-average performance in this area is not down to errors in the completion of the assessment process. And we have recommended that management look more closely at what the housing options officers do and how their works are positioned. Maybe also consider trialling different ways of working and introducing potentially a local council target. So it's really the recommendations around service design as opposed to the systems in place themselves. Thank you.
So anyone got any questions on this report? Okay.
Convener, there are questions from Bailey McPherson, councillor Lynn and councillor McCready.
Okay, we'll start with Bailey McPherson.
Thanks convener. And it's going around the issues that Pamela highlighted in particular, obviously, as what are already aware, our percentage of applications assessed within 28 days is indeed lower than the Scottish average. What I'm quite interested to learn from officers, not so much from the audit perspective, but more from the housing perspective, is where they are with this in terms of addressing it. I heard clearly what Pamela had to say and obviously there's helpful narrative in the report before us, but I'd be grateful for some reassurance from officers that every effort is being made. I fully accept the points made that the council's meeting its statutory duties, but quite clearly we want to see applications assessed as quickly as is possible. And I'm just really wondering if perhaps Mrs Furley or Mr Simpson might be able to give us more information as to how, you know, the priority that's being given by the housing service and where they are with it and what sort of timescale we're talking about for any redesign that Pamela indicated would occur so we can see an improvement in this particular area.
Okay, David or Elaine?
If I can say a few words and then David could come in, just Bailey McPherson, just to reassure you, this is a top priority for neighbourhood services to ensure that we deliver our responsibilities in terms of homelessness and no more important than this year due to the pandemic and the impact that it's had on particularly those who are homeless. I would say in terms of assessment, it is important to get all of the information and sometimes that does take some time, but the benefits of that is that you can get a better outcome for the individual by fully assessing every issue that sits in relation to their case and sometimes that can take a bit longer. So just to put it in that context, but I'll ask David to come in and just explain some of the work that him and Louise Pucher are doing to progress some of the applications that we've got at the moment.
Yeah, thanks Elaine. This is a priority for us, as Elaine has said, Fraser, and we are looking at it very closely. We already started looking at how we're set up. As you can imagine, this has been a very high-profile service over the pandemic because we've had increased level of presentations. Just to give you a context though, our performance is actually 25 days. So we are within the statutory target, but we are looking at what constitutes that 25 days. And I think what Elaine's touched on is really important, that no two cases are the same. You'll get some cases that are fairly straightforward, but you'll get some very complex cases. And some of the key bits, maybe that will give you the reassurance you're looking for, are that we're looking at the component parts that make up why a case takes X number of days. And that might be looking at why people drift away, why we lose contact with people. There are some cases that are resolved by the person themselves and then they just drift off and they don't come back to us. And from our perspective, we need to open a case, assess it, close the case, and that's what you measure in those days. So we are looking at all the component parts. We're looking at the reasons. We're looking at, as Pamela said, how we're structured and how we're set up. One thing I would say is that while assessment is an absolutely critical part, equally important is prevention, that that team does as well, and also the temporary accommodation duty. So it's a balance to be struck about how quickly we get cases resolved. But I think Elaine's point about, and these weren't Elaine's words, but you know, if you, if you get through a case as quickly as you possibly can, you might miss something and you might not do a full assessment, which might actually lead to the person not getting a suitable outcome. So we actually, just, I suppose the final thing is that you asked about what our timescale is. We're working on this at the minute and we're working with a new team leader in the team at the minute. So they're bringing a fresh view to some of the ways we're set up. So over the next few months and probably towards, you know, September, October, we'll have done the look at how we're set up. What we're committed to doing is looking at that to see whether there's a different way to structure ourselves within the team. But I think what we'd need to make sure is that if we do change the way we're set up, that it delivers a better outcome and not just a different outcome. Hopefully that reassures you.
Yeah, that, that, I think they're both very helpful contributions. I'm grateful to Elaine and to David for these. I think we all understand the, the balance, if you like, between speed and complexity. I think, I think that's understood and we will obviously want to get the best outcomes for, for, for customers. But the bottom line is if someone's homeless and we have a statutory responsibility to help them, you know, obviously we want to see that executed as quickly as we possibly can. And just ask one very brief follow-up and that is, and follow-up is exactly the phrase. Is there an intention to report back so that we can see what, you know, what steps have been taken once you've reviewed the situation? I think we'd be very interested to know what actual steps you end up taking to improve the situation going forward.
Be happy to report back at a suitable juncture, Fraser, because I think obviously you need to, need a little bit of time to work it through and see what it comes out with, but happy through the normal reporting back follow-up route. Yeah, we'll come back, yeah.
That's much of it, thank you.
Sounds reasonable, David, if you could copy that to everyone on the scrutiny committee would be useful. Councillor Lynn?
Thank you convener. I'm generally very pleased with the service provided by, for homeless people in Dundee, which is unrecognisable compared to the situation when I came to Dundee in the 90s to work with homeless people. So well done. I did think that the figure of 1,414 applications was very high, given the size of our population. My first question is, is that 1,414 individuals or would say a family count as one in effect? And if that was the case, it would mean it'd be a lot more than 1,414 individuals. And my second question was, given that it appears that the number of homelessness applications has increased in the last year and these figures refer to the previous year, how confident are you that we'll be able to meet the challenge and make the improvements that have been recommended, given that increase?
I'm, I'm happy to take that if you want me to. It is applications as opposed to households. So it's 1,414 applications. So an application may include more than one person. Although I would say, especially in the last year, we've seen the majority of applications being from single people. But we did have, we, in normal times, if you take out COVID times, we do get applications from families, people with children. The other point was, I'm paraphrasing, you know, are we coping with, with the, the impact that COVID's had, given that it, it has had a big impact on homelessness across the country? We're coping really well actually because we've, we've looked at how we engage with people, we've made services a bit more accessible in terms of remote and safe working. We're working really closely with partners in the city, the third sector and other advocacy agencies. I think we can make the, we can do the review that's been suggested in this report and it won't harm the day-to-day service because we're really tuned into being responsive and being able to provide services to people who present looking for advice or assistance as homeless. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, thanks.
If I can just add to that as well, that, you know, the work that we've been doing recently, just in relation to the increase in number of people in temporary accommodation as a consequence of the pandemic, we're actively working through those families in temporary accommodation to get them into permanent accommodation as quickly as possible. And, and now that we're able to get, and construction services are working closely to ensure that we prioritise our relit so that we can maximise throughput of people from temporary accommodation to permanent accommodation.
Yeah, because relits have no doubt been impacted in the last year due to the inability to perform essential maintenance before a relit. So thanks for the, thanks for the responses.
Okay, councillor McCready?
Yeah, thanks. Just wanted to follow up on what's been said. I mean, I suppose my question is around, you know, whether the statutory requirements and targets are actually helpful. I kind of get, I, first of all, will say that I get that particularly members of the scrutiny committee and particularly when we're looking at a report from internal audit, things that are easily measurable, I think, I understand that that's important. But, you know, as I think as officers have tried to, I think I've tried to suggest, I don't want to speak for them, that actually the outcome for homeless people is more important than in some respects than an arbitrary date, you know, an arbitrary length of time. I mean, I think we need to get, we need to get the, we need to get solutions for people as quickly as possible. We need to get the right solution for people. And I suppose the other thing is, I may be reading between the lines, but I mean, I think, would it be fair to say that some of the issues around here are people that might have, what, what, I'm not sure, I terribly like the phrase, but people that might have a, a kind of chaotic lifestyle and things like that and expecting them to kind of engage and continue to engage with the services is, can be problematic. So I just wonder, is there, you know, is there a broader thing about, you know, how useful the kind of target is? Could we be doing something differently? Should we, I mean, I know that it's suggesting that we have a sort of Dundee specific thing, but presumably that still sits within Scottish targets or Scottish legislation. So I just wonder if you have any thoughts on that?
If I can come in first and just to say that, you know, obviously there are statutory targets and we will meet them, but we're not at the expense of getting good and proper outcomes for, for families within the city. And, and sometimes it can take a bit of time as you try to establish, you know, what, what does someone need in order to move from temporary accommodation into permanent accommodation so that that tenancy can be sustained? Because there's no point in putting someone into a tenancy if they can't sustain it. So all of that has to be thought through from, from beginning to end. And I know the work that, that David and Louise have been doing around Housing First and working with their partners for that wraparound support is all about making sure that, that families have the right support in place to allow them to sustain their tenancy. I don't know if David wants to add anything to that.
Yeah, I mean, I would make a couple of comments if I can. You're absolutely right about targets. Targets lead inevitably to somebody being the best and somebody being at the bottom. What we're aspiring to do is to provide a service that meets our statutory duties, but also delivers a good outcome for those that go through that service. And I think councillor McCready is absolutely right that we do, that does draw in the number of people who would have what would be described as chaotic behaviours. That's not an excuse, that's a reality, but what that means is sometimes you need to be more engaged with people and be a bit more sticky. I think the phrase is that you, you don't just give up when you don't get a response. The other point I was going to make was one that Elaine's touched on, that Dundee's one of the five pathfinders for Housing First in Scotland. So we're at the sharp end of trying new things. Housing First, which is basically those with the most chaotic behaviours, get in a house and then get in wraparound support, intensive support though. We're, we're one of the five pathfinders and it's going actually really well. And it's what that does for those individual people, but also what it teaches us about other ways to interact with, with this client group, what works in terms of support, you know, what lets you have a long ongoing engagement with someone as opposed to just then touching the service occasionally. So that's, that's learning being done on the ground as it were. But, you know, we're, we're keen to go back to the start of this, to improve that, that performance that we're delivering at the minute in terms of the number of days it takes to assess, because we would like to do it quicker for, for various reasons. But I think it's a good point made about, you know, the target in itself is measuring a lot of performances across the country in different local authorities with different contexts against one statutory target.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much for that. Councillor Short?
Hi, thank you. I obviously came from a background where I was involved in the private rent sector and you could bet your bottom dollar, come January, you would have a line of people looking for support for accommodation because of relationship breakdowns because of either, you know, Christmas or holidays, these sort of things always peak and trough. Do we, these, these are obviously statistics that are looked at over an annual basis. Do we have peaks and troughs where we know that we may have to kind of look at, right, we need extra bodies to support the system in January because we know that that's a peak time for applications? Is that taken into consideration? Because presumably that whole statistic is based over an annual process and there will be ups and downs across that?
Yeah, if I could try and answer that, I think there is an element of seasonal fluctuation. If you look at this across a long enough period, I think we'll have to set the last year aside a bit because it's been an unusual year. But I think if you look at the statistics across the piece, we'll see more, the way, we'll see more of that seasonal variation. What I was going to say was, I think it's not so much tied to seasons, it's more tied to behaviour. So what we see is relationship breakdowns maybe being more prevalent after Christmas or parents putting their children out after Christmas potentially. It's, it's an unfortunate reality that we do have some themes that emerge about what drives the homelessness applications. Lots of experience and we do analyse that, we do look at that. We don't just draft in more people if we have more applications, we just basically have to get through the work that's there. But I think to reassure you, we can get through the work that's there, we can cope with the volume that comes in without doing that to the detriment of the quality of the service. But I think councillor Short's right, there are themes within what's presented. No two cases are the same, but I told you earlier that, you know, during the last year, we've seen a lot more single people presented. Before the restrictions put on for COVID around evictions across the sector, we had elements of families coming forward. Harder to deal with because there's bigger units to, to provide accommodation for, more complex needs often. So we learn from all of this experience and we try and feed it back into the So we learn from all of this experience and we try and feed it back into the service, so that the staff are best equipped to deal with whatever presents. But hopefully that's given you a bit of a flavour, councillor Short, of what's presenting to us and what analysis we do of it.
Yeah, okay, brilliant, thank you.
Can I just add that we also have the support of our third sector partners as well? And they have particular specialist skills and often they will support families to try and prevent the breakdown of relationships between families. So that's an important area that often the third sector can bring to the table as well.
You know I'm a big fan of the Family Sustainability Project already, so definitely that's one that's a real industry leader, isn't it? So yeah, these things are hugely important. We don't work in silos, do we? Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much for all these questions and thanks to officers for the answers. You know, we're all dealing with applications for housing and it gives you another insight to the issues that the department faces when dealing with, you know, the sort of 7,000 or waiting list, you know, forty, over 1,100 of them looking to be replaced based on being homeless, you know, gives the sort of complex issues that are happening in the city another sort of dimension. And, you know, I'm certainly dealing with quite a few people that are looking for housing that are very frustrated. It doesn't happen quick enough, but I can understand the issues that officers face as well. Pamela, will move over yourself.
Thank you. So moving on then to the fourth report, so this is a follow-up of GDPR, the General Data Protection Regulation. It's a formal follow-up report of a previous internal audit report that was presented to you, number 2018-06. We've concluded that while some work has been completed to address the control weaknesses in the original report, that there are still some other areas that require to be addressed. Probably a couple of points to note about this review. Firstly, the two pieces of legislation that came in in May 2018 that this report relates to were very significant pieces of legislation that required the organisation to make a lot of policy and procedural developments. So it wasn't a quick turnaround on the recommendations in the original report. And also just reflecting on the year that we've just had to date, it has had an impact on the progress, because a lot of the recommendations don't just relate to a central point, they are relating to what happens in all services. So I don't know if anyone else wants to say anything on that, but I would say that firstly, there's a lot of recommendations in the report. And secondly, because of the situation we've found ourselves in with the pandemic, we haven't been able to take them forward as quickly as what we had hoped. But there are steps in place to take them forward now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wanting to make a comment before we bring people in for questions? Okay, Bailey McPherson?
Yeah, my question, and I fully understand what Pamela has said in relation to, you know, the number of recommendations and the fact that we've been through the small matter of a pandemic over the last 12 months. So I don't think this should be seen as a criticism in any way, but the question I suppose I have for, I note the report says, you know, the audit findings and recommendations were reported to the executive director of corporate services. And I was really wondering if officers could give an indication as to the time scale in which it is likely that there will be progress, recognising that we're not out of the COVID health emergency yet. And I think we do all have to recognise that, but nonetheless, there is a clear requirement to ensure that the recommendations are all enacted.
Okay, so someone look to make a comment? Okay, Kenny?
Yeah, just to say, I mean, assuming we get some kind of return to the offices, which will certainly help, I would be looking to address these issues the latest sometime next year and as early as possible next year. I think it's true to say that, you know, there's a degree to which some of this is a work in progress. I've obviously got to work with the Information Governance Manager. I think I'll obviously need to work with Greg and the council management team and the strategic GDPR group that we've set up. What I would say about it is that, you know, there's a reference here to e-learning training. I'm pretty sure that we're up to about 90% plus. But I actually think that the comment about completion is maybe missing the point a wee bit. And as much as that, we're never really looking at this as completed. What we're looking at is continuous training that we'll have to do. Once people are finished doing, they'll start another cycle. And we've taken advice as well that the Information Commissioner would expect it within a certain period of time. You know, just to be clear as well, we do have breach reporting and we keep a really strong eye on it. I think it's true to say that Pamela's right, this is across all services and it's quite difficult, not just for me, but also for Ian, to get people engaged in some of this when it's not, you know, for instance, I've been, I don't want to name it, an individual or anything, but for instance, the Waste Disposal Service. There are some areas that have got less issues with this and are more difficult to engage with. And that's some of the things that we're going to try and do. But I can reassure that the committee is that the areas that I think we would have the most concern with, which would be, for instance, children and families, the people there are well-trained, well-knowledgeable and know all about these issues. I think a lot of the criticism perhaps is to do with not being in a position to make sure that we've got council-wide and council-training, that we can evidence where we're to get perhaps an unexpected breach.
Okay, sorry, I see Mr. Many, I was just going to respond, but I see Mr. Many's got his hand up, so I'll not yet.
So Roger, are you looking to make a comment as well?
Yes, please, Convena.
Sure.
So thank you and thank you, Bailey McPherson. Just to follow on from what Mr. McKay has indicated, I've had a discussion previously with Mr. Colgan and I'd like to assure the members of the scrutiny committee that as and when we regard it as appropriate, given the response to the pandemic which we're currently engaged in, we do intend to report to the management team and seek their support for a programme of work that will conclude all these recommendations within an appropriate time, as Mr. McKay has indicated. Thank you.
That's very helpful. Just by way of follow-up, I completely take the point Kenny made regarding you're never quite, you're never complete. You know, you'll always be, you know, you'll have new members of staff, you'll have, you know, required to know what our GDPR responsibilities are and refreshing training and so on. I get that completely. I was really meaning completion in terms of the recommendations. And with that in mind, and I heard what Kenny had to say about, you know, hopefully during the first part of 2022, or certainly during 2022, that's, if you like, a helpful target. I think it would be quite helpful if, and I don't know whether that's formally to scrutiny committee or just simply by updating members of the scrutiny committee, just to let us know. Because I'm conscious that there will not be another internal audit report coming back, that's the follow-up. It would just be useful to know that the progress that we've been given, you know, that we've been given assurances on today will be reported back to us in some shape or form.
Okay. Councillor McCready?
Yeah, thanks very much, Kevia. I mean, I think Mr. McKay and Mr. Many may have gone some way to alleviate my concern, but I didn't want to ask this question. I mean, I totally understand that COVID-19 has had a huge impact on what's been possible and what the council can do. But also understand that the penalties for getting it wrong under GDPR can be huge. So are we convinced that notwithstanding the pandemic et cetera, that the council is doing everything it can to make sure that we are at as little risk as possible? And I suppose if there's any update or any view, not view, but any update on on whether any of the COVID legislation actually gave us any comfort on any of this? But just an idea of what risk we might be at, or are we comfortable that we're at no greater risk than we might be otherwise?
Okay, Kenny, you want to answer?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, it wouldn't be fair to say that COVID, you know, sort of allows you to breach privacy. It's probably true to say that the Information Commissioner has accepted in certain circumstances. I'll give you one example, which is to enable emergency food packages to go to people who were being shielded. The Information Commissioner, I think, give advice that normally they might have been a bit concerned that people having all that information about vulnerable people, but in the particular circumstances, they said that that was probably fair enough. So there's been a wee bit of leeway there. But in terms of generally the things that are mentioned in the audit update, there's nothing that COVID is giving us what you might call a free pass. What I would say though is that I think a lot of the comments have largely been about organisational. I'm well aware, I think, well, we all are, about the fines and what could happen here. It still is the case in terms of the breaches, that the breaches that we tend to get as a council, and we do monitor them monthly, are careless ones, nonetheless shouldn't be happening. And I think as well as maybe discussing with Greg and Roger et cetera, we might even, I think, particularly when people are back at the office, look at very much a publicity campaign. Because the major issue we're facing is not what you might call a systematic problem. The major issue we're facing is isolated incidents of carelessness. And whilst I can't give anyone any guarantee that one of these wouldn't be sufficient to lead to a fine, I hope that that would be the case. And the issue for me would be, if we manage to do all the things that are referred to in the follow-up next year, we would be in a far better position to mitigate any sentence where we're to breach it with the Information Commissioner. Because the Information Commissioner is always looking at how you've gone about mitigating things. And in that sense, at the moment, we are a wee bit exposed, because until we carry out some of these things, we can't say we've 100% done everything that we could.
Are you happy enough with that?
Yeah, thanks, thank you.
Okay, is that report agreed? Is seeing others looking to come in? Is that agreed? Okay, thank you. I think we're on to the next report and you'll lead me through that as well, Pamela, is it?
Yeah, thank you. Just in relation to the previous one though, just to let you know that it will be included as part of the annual progress review exercise. So you will receive management updates on those recommendations going forward. Okay, thank you. So in relation to the report before you just now then, it's the 2021/22 internal audit plan for your approval, along with a progress update on delivery of the 2021 internal audit plan. So just really some key points to note from the report. The 2021/22 internal audit plan was compiled following a comprehensive planning exercise, including stakeholder consultation to which the majority of you fed into. It is risk-based and you'll see the cross-referencing to the Corporate Risk Register, service-level risk registers and the COVID-19 recovery risk register in the right-hand column of the plan, which is the layout that I've been using for a number of years now. As you know from discussions we've had previously, the plan needs to be sufficient and diverse enough to allow me to provide my annual opinion to you every year on the council's framework of governance, risk management and control. And I think that the assignments certainly contained within the 2021/22 internal audit plan will allow me to do that. In terms of productive audit days, we're staying with 800, which is in line with previous years, so there's no cut there. I'll draw your attention to paragraph 4.10 of the covering report, which lists five assignments that I'm proposing to carry forward to 2022. And one assignment keystone that I would like to defer. The reasons for those proposed amendments are also detailed in the report beside that. And then moving on then, in terms of progress towards delivering the 2021 internal audit plan, which is at appendix B, with the exception of what I'm proposing to carry forward and the one deferral, all assignments with unexpected output have either already been reported to scrutiny committee, including today's committee, or should be reported to you all by the June committee. I suppose in terms of the plan, the 2021/22 plan, just to draw to your attention, in line again with the 2021 plan, I've set aside some more time to look at COVID-19 recovery, because obviously we're not out of this pandemic, as we've all been mentioning today. So again, I've set aside some time in relation to that. And the plan itself is at appendix A, so I'm happy to take any questions you've got. Obviously, we've all had discussions as part of the stakeholder process about the risks that the council's exposed to and what reviews would be beneficial to management and elected members.
Bailey McPherson?
Thanks, Convena, and grateful to Pamela for that introduction. I think firstly, I was just going to make a comment that, all things considered, given the challenges of the last year, the progress that has been made in terms of meeting the 2021 internal audit plan, and considering the challenges and actually engaging with departments who are dealing with, you know, a lot of the service provision during a very challenging situation, I think the progress has been absolutely excellent. Now, I think congratulations to the internal audit staff and in fact, staff in departments who obviously cooperate with the staff is in order, given the challenges that there have been over the past 12 months. But my question really is around the new year plan. And Pamela made reference to the risk codes that, I think somebody has to mute, the risk codes that are in place. And I'm just very conscious, just looking at the plan, to be blunt about it, there's an awful lot of red. In other words, very high. And I suppose my question for Pamela, you know, some things jumped out at me. In fact, you yourself, Paula, mentioned something we discussed when you were doing your consultation, which is around the COVID-19 recovery area. That jumps out at me as a very, very high, if you like. And I'm just really wondering, given that there's an awful lot in that category, how you categorise what you will, you know, tackle first to ensure it is absolutely done during the 2022 year? You know, I just, looking down, it's quite a subjective thing and it's quite hard as well, because an awful lot of them, you think they're really important areas of service provision. But I'm just really wondering, given that so much sits into the, you know, the risk code of very high, how you've, in drawing together your actual programme for delivery of this, how you're prioritising to ensure that those are of the highest importance, like, as I say, COVID-19 recovery, actually get done first or at least guaranteed to be done during the 2022 financial year?
Thanks, some good questions in there. So in relation to the right-hand column, the inherent risk column, so those are the inherent risks. Those are not the residual risks, which would be the risks that are assessed after we've considered the internal controls that are in place. So actually, having a lot of red and amber there is a good thing, because it demonstrates that the internal audit resource has been used wisely. It's been used to look at the areas of risk that the council's exposed to. So that's a good thing. In terms of delivering higher priority areas, I have not gone down to the state. I mean, obviously the plan's not been approved by yourselves yet, but I've not liaised with services. So what will happen, if it is approved today, is that the team will reach out to the services and the organisation and liaise with them with regards scheduling in the reviews and the best time to do that. Because it needs to add value for the organisation as well as give assurance to myself, which I can feed forward to you. There's no point in going in somewhere where they're under a lot of pressure trying to do a review unless we absolutely have to. So I don't know if that answers your questions, but I'm not really at the stage yet to say, I've not liaised with the services yet. But I know what ones really need to be carried out and I'll be working alongside management to ensure that they are.
Fully understand, very helpful and happy with that. Thanks, Convena.
Councillor Short?
Thank you. 2020 was meant to be that year after
2020 was meant to be that year after, well, running on from 2014, when we had about 10 elections, by-elections, referendum, do you name it. I think 2020 was that time where we didn't have anything and of course, Covid hit. And so you've had to push back the, looking at the electoral registration. Can I say also what a fantastic job they're doing at the moment? Obviously, they have no city chambers at the moment and they're coping with buildings that have been closed because of Covid. So working with the members of the city development team. And I'm sure that you're working very closely with everybody on that, Pamela, from your point of view. But really, my question is, should we be putting pressure on the 2122 scrutiny? Because obviously, in a year's time, we will be sitting in the same position, looking at coming up from an election where you're not just looking at two constituencies and the region, but actually looking at eight different wards. So is it a bit too much to ask of them to have scrutiny on top of that as well?
I'm not fully following your question. I think Roger's wanting to come in as well. But this review was requested by management to be included in the plan.
Okay, you're looking to comment, Roger?
Thank you, Convenor. First of all, can I say, councillor Short, that I very much appreciate your kind comments about the electoral registration team. And I know that you've been in touch with them separately and personally regarding that. That's very much appreciated by us all. Can I say to you that I do appreciate your assistance as well in making the comment about whether or not this would be a good time for the internal audit review to take place? Pamela Redpath very kindly agreed not to ask me to complete it this time because of the pressures that were on us. But what we have agreed is that at some suitable time after the current election and before the next election, we'll carry out the review when it's a good time for the electoral registration team. So please rest assured that won't place unreasonable stress on them and we will be able to conclude that review in time for it to be reported back to council during the course of the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my fear. I didn't want to put on toward pressure on people who know that there's something coming at the end of the line. So thank you. I do appreciate that, Roger. Thank you, Convenor.
Hoping that this report's agreed. I would just like to say, Pamela, that I'm pleased that the fire risk assessment is in there based on the enormous letter that I received and shared with yourself and the chief executive. I think the content of that letter leads me to believe that it's an area that needs to be focused on. So I thank you that it's there. Is that report agreed? Okay, on to the next report.
Okay, so item four is the local government in Scotland financial overview.
Is there an officer leading me through this?
Mr. McPherson to speak, Convenor.
Okay, Robert.
Thank you, Chair. This report provides an overview of the position across Scotland from the previous year. You will see that a large part of it is actually concerned with the impact of Covid on councils and the positions that they find themselves in. There's nothing much to add, but I suppose just to reiterate what I was saying to members last week is that we find ourselves in the position at the end of the last year of being in a relatively healthy financial position, but with significant challenges ahead of us going forward, Chair. Obviously, myself, we are happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, I see councillor McCreedy's looking to come in.
I've got a couple of questions, Convenor, if that's okay. The first one was on, it's mentioned on page 33 and I suppose 39 in more detail of the large numbers of our paperwork. And it's about the key message and it's the key message about, you know, council funding and income and the, you know, increase in 1920 across Scotland, but, you know, had been reduced in the previous seven years. So I just wonder if we think that the council and/or COSLA are doing enough to kind of lobby in terms of getting Scottish government to support local government more and so that we aren't in a situation where local government is targeted for cuts disproportionately to anybody else. You know, and I think, you know, obviously, Bailey Scott's not here to defend himself, but you know, I think we are aware that, you know, some of that is to do with Tory austerity. But you know, it was also being passed on by Scottish government in Edinburgh. So I just wonder if we've got any thoughts on what more we could do to campaign for local government?
Okay, you able to make comment, Robert?
Chair, just from a non-political point of view, it's certainly clear that COSLA's been making the case for the importance of the services that they deliver. And I think they produced a document earlier this year setting out the value of what we do. I would also say that local government has been tremendously strong voiced throughout the Covid period in meeting local people's needs and that continues. It's very hard at the moment. Clearly, there's been a lot of additional funding that has come in to support the economy and individuals at the moment in the previous period. And obviously, it's a political matter what funding comes forward after the upcoming election. And obviously, as officers, we will work with what we have got.
Yeah, thanks very much. I mean, I think we should maybe consider, you know, meeting more representations to Scottish government and/or COSLA on that, Convenor. But maybe you've got some thoughts on that. I've got another question though, again, in terms of the key messages. And it's partly in reference to the deputation also that we had on Monday evening to the council. So we see in the key messages which are highlighted on page 33 that Glasgow City Council's equal pay funding strategy had a significant impact on total reserves, debt and capital expenditure for this year. I mean, their equal pay funding strategy had a significant impact on the whole of Scottish local government, which clearly reflects the size of Glasgow City Council. I suppose, I think that, I mean, I heard what was said by officers on Monday evening and I heard what was said by the deputation on Monday evening. So I suppose the question I have in this context is, are we convinced that Dundee City Council is not putting itself at risk and/or is able to deal with any risk that it's put itself at in terms of equal pay claims at this point in time?
Sherry, happy for me to come back in?
Yeah, sure.
So I think in financial terms, we're not in a position to be able to say, as Mr. Many highlighted, on Monday evening, we have received claims and they're going through due legal process at this stage. There is also an exercise going on, looking at job evaluating within construction services. And I think we're not in a position at this stage to see what the outcome of that is going to be. That's something we will clearly come back to you with just as soon as we can in terms of the process. I'm clearly aware that there's been a significant impact on Glasgow City Council addressing these. And clearly, we don't want to be in the position where council services are affected by anything we have to do. But we simply don't know at this stage what the outcome is. And we'll work with colleagues in the trade unions and with our legal colleagues to take that forward. I don't know if Mr. Cogdon or Mr. Many want to add anything to that.
Convenor, thank you. I have nothing further to add over than what Robert has added. And Mr. Many may want to confirm the council's position to scrutiny members, as he did on Monday night. But just to echo one point, which was that in previous instances where there has been any equal pay claims, the council has looked to settle those, but we're currently not in any position to do that yet. So I'll pass over to Mr. Many, Convenor, to see if there's anything else that you would want Mr. Many to add at this point, if you're agreeable.
Yeah, that's great. That's fine.
Thank you, Convenor. Just to confirm that with regard to these equal pay claims, as with regard to any claims that are made against the council, there's the closest possible working relationship between colleagues in legal services and colleagues in corporate finance. And should there come a time at which the council required to consider the making of any payments as a result of equal pay claims or any other claims, there would be a discussion between myself, the chief executive and the executive director of corporate services as to how we ought to deal with that. And should there be any matters of concern that we felt appropriate to bring to the attention of elected members, that would be done at the earliest possible time.
Okay, thank you. Councillor McCreedy, you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm happy with that response. Thanks, Convenor.
Okay, councillor Cordell?
Thank you, Chair. It was just a quick question on the matter of reserves because obviously, sometimes it's suggested they're there for a rainy day and we have had two very rainy days in austerity and the pandemic come along one after the other. So I wonder if there was any comment on the current state of Dundee City Council's reserves and the position moving forward with those?
Convenor, if I may?
Yeah, sure.
So I think we started the year with 8 million of reserves. This is the previous year, I suppose we're now into, but we started last year, which is just over 2% of revenue budget, which is not a significant sum. And when you compare that with the 40 million that was ultimately spent on dealing with Covid, then without the additional money that came in to support us, it wouldn't have gone very far in that. So we're going to end the position, we've ended last year, sorry, we don't have the exact figures yet, but you saw the predictions and that we'd end last year with increased reserves, but we've got a significant period of uncertainty against us. So that's something that we'll be reviewing, councillor Cordell, and coming back to the council within due course. Where should reserves sit in the light of those pressures that we face and what challenges have we still got ahead of us? And we know certainly that recovering lost income is going to be something and rebuilding income from parking and in LICD, for example, are going to take some time to do. So we need to look at that. So that's a piece of work that we're going to start now with a view of coming back to you as soon as we can, setting out the longer term position.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Can I maybe ask the question? You know, when we make decisions as councillors, then we obviously have to have the best possible information about the cause and effect of the decisions that we're likely to make. And I notice in the report, it makes reference to IGBs, some 22 of them struggling for a breakeven position. And in our budget this year, the administration top sliced 778,000 from the IGB, something that was voted through, obviously, and that become the budget. Six days later, the IGB produced a paper to suggest that their budget position would be £5 million in the red to deliver the services that they needed to deliver. And I'm wondering, how was that relayed to us as councillors? So is it we had the full understanding of that whilst making the decision to stop to top slice the 778,000? Because I only see a narrative of about five lines, we near reference to the IGB likely to struggle.
So, Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
So probably a couple of things are probably important to note that I think there was an overall, I can't remember the exact figures, I'm happy to get them for you, an overall increase in funding to the IGB for this year from the council, albeit that there was a reduction to that. Overall, it was an increase in funding and that the IGB is its own body that has to set its own budget, which it did after the council had set their budget. I think that we're just waiting to hear what the outturn position for the IGB will. But I think that after the additional funding that has come in, they will be in a better position than we were envisaging originally at the turn of the year, probably in terms of the outturn position. And I think one of the difficulties, of course, has been the progress that they've been able to make in changing services and looking at redesign of services because of the Covid period. Obviously, the huge effort has been around responding to Covid. So that's something that clearly I am acutely conscious of. We've got a responsibility as a council to pick up a third of any deficit that's in the IGB going forward. So we'll be continuing to monitor that closely.
I suppose, you know, I've got the figures in front of me that the money to the IGB went up because that was contained within the five lines that we received at a budget time. But what we didn't receive was the information that was given to the IGB six days after our budget was set that suggested there would be £5 million in the red. So we were making a decision about top slicing 700,000 or 1,000 from them, knowing that we're leaving them short. And there's a balance, I think, as councillors in delivering equity, you know, across services. And for one, for me, health is really important. And, you know, I'm just wondering how, you know, if we haven't received this year that level of understanding, how will we receive it in the future? So is it we've got a better understanding of the cause and effect of taking 700,000 for the IGB? Not only, you know, it is a slightly better position because they did put out a second paper sometime after. But it did put them in it, but did, with the latest wage deal offered by the Scottish government to health workers, put them in a further 600,000 or 1,000 pound worth of trouble because of their contribution towards that. So, you know, given that we need, as councillors, the best possible advice for making, I'm wondering if I've missed something or we just weren't given it?
Thanks, Convenor. So as chief executive, I maybe just come in. I think the first point is I'm happy to have a discussion with you and any other member if you feel that information is not being provided to you. I am aware that some information may be circulated to members of the IGB through budget sessions that they've went through. Overall, the medium and long-term financial plan for the council, which is set, is that any demographic or cost pressures will be met by the IGB and arms-length organisations themselves. But if there is a point that you want to discuss with me or indeed other officers about how we improve the flow of information to elected members for future year budget settings, then I'm more than happy to have that discussion with you.
You know, we pick up the tab at the end of the year if it goes wrong. If I didn't pass any money across to them at all last year and left them in a deficit of that other £2 million, I could have done something in setting the budget differently for the council. Because it looks like the IGB don't have to set a balanced budget. So, you know, there could be a bit of gaming going on. So I think we do need to have a very clear understanding in the future about the cause and effect of anything that we're doing, such as top slicing 770,000 for funding that leaves another organisation in the deficit.
So thanks, Convenor. So as I've said earlier on, I'm more than happy to have that discussion with yourself or any other member regarding to information that you feel would be relevant in providing you to make decisions.
Okay, I thank you for that then. Is this report agreed? Okay, thank you.
That takes us on to the final item on the agenda. Dundee City Council Audit Scotland Annual Audit Plan 2020/2021. I believe Bruce Crosby from Audit Scotland is to speak to this report.
Right, Bruce, hand it over to you.
Thanks very much, Convenor. I'm happy to do that. I don't know if any of the officers would want to introduce their own paper first or if you want me to go straight into the annual audit plan?
Be happy enough for you to go into the audit plan. I think the paper that we produce is a bit of a summary of where you're going to take one.
Absolutely, that's fine. Thanks very much for that. Yeah, this paper sets out a plan for 2021 and it's set against a backdrop of Covid-19 and the recognition that the previous timetables that we've worked to are no longer appropriate and we need to be flexible to reflect the emerging risks that are coming out from the Covid pandemic. We've also highlighted the extension of the audit appointment to 2122. That was giving us an increase to the normal five-year appointment that we have, again, to give some stability and to assist us with the tendering process for the next appointment. I'll turn your attention to exhibit one at page 72, which sets out the audit risks that we've identified for the audit this year. we've identified for the audit this year and the management assurances that have been put in place to mitigate those risks and also our planned audit approach. So members may recall that I previously stated about the first four risks in the exhibit, which are common in most organisations. So they're nothing to be overly worried about standing out. Of the other risks, two which relate to the impact of COVID on both the financial statement entries and also on the impact of performance of services. We've also identified the risk as a perennial risk about the financial sustainability and two further risks on the group boundary assessment, taking on board the changes to the leisure and cultural Dundee funding and risks over the slippage of the capital programme. The plan also covers the audit of the trusts and it sets out the audit fee at just short of £370,000, including the fee for the trust, which is an increase of about 2.5%. We set out the scope of our audit work at page 78 and this includes information on our assessment of the materiality levels that we plan to put in place for both the council and the trusts and the timetable for the accounts, which is planned to be signed off by the end of October, which is then the Scottish government's extension of the sign off date, which is running to the end of November 2021. We've also set out our assessment of internal audit and the extent to which we plan to place reliance on their work. And we've assessed the internal audit as complying with the public sector internal audit standards and we plan to consider the work for our wider dimension work on the audit, which will subsequently feature in our annual audit report. Finally, just let's say we've set out our planned work on the wider audit dimension, set out in exhibit six at page 81 of the papers. This includes our approach to our best value work for 2021. And this will consist of reporting on the progress made against the FMD, the best audit report and our 2021 annual audit report. And this will be reported in our annual audit report that we bring to the council, the committee in October.
Sorry, can I ask somebody to mute their phone? Can I ask somebody to mute? Okay, Bruce.
Convena, I've muted the individual who wasn't on mute, so apologies.
Okay, well done. All right, Bruce.
That's fine. I'd actually got to the end of what I wanted to say, but if anybody missed any of that, I'd happily repeat any of it. If not, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Good. I think we've got all the questions for anyone, for Bruce. Bruce said I'm going to ask for a discount every time you come to, but I'm not going to ask that this year. I was hoping you'd just brought that up front.
Well, if it's within my control, I might consider it.
Good. Well, you always bear that in mind for next year, then. Okay, Bruce, there appears to be no questions, so thanks very much and I wish you well through the year. Okay, is that us finished then?
That's everything on the agenda, yes.
Okay, thanks very much for your time. See you and enjoy the rest of your afternoon.